Good evening. This is the Ashland School Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2025. Start by reading our vision statement, our mission statement, which is the Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and social emotional skills to pursue their chosen path, and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. The agenda for this evening is our call to order now, opportunity for public comment. We have reports and presentations from the High School Student Advisory Council, and Miss St. Kerr, warrant approvals, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report, our action items and discussion updates and votes. We have travel proposal, two of them, one for Germany and Austria, April 2027. We have another one for the boys' basketball program, and we expect to hear from Coach Mike Norman on. Discussion about the 26-27 school calendar, three policies that we'll do a first read on, policy IKF, graduation requirements, IKFE, competency determination, and JEC, middle school pathway exploration. Under consent agenda, our approval of gifts and donations. Reports to school committee, and then we will adjourn. Everybody good with the agenda? So going back to the first topic is public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? Claudia, if you want to come up, just introduce yourself. You know the drill.
Yeah, thank you very much. Claudia Bennett, Nine Sandstone Way. Really, I'm here on my own behalf, but also on the behalf of the Ashland Day Committee. We just had a really terrific event on Saturday, and I really needed to come and thank because so many of you and our students made it a huge success. So I specifically want to thank Mr. Adams, who, you know, gave us permission to ask the principals to put up signs. And then when we were down to kind of zero hour, and we kept on failing on getting a Gator within a half an hour, I said, okay, well, Mr. Adams just got back to me in half an hour. We can have a Gator. So, which was huge. The kids were really disappointed. They couldn't drive it. But nonetheless, you know, Mr. Matthew, who, you know, really bailed us out on trying to get our finances all squared away. We kind of jumped into this. And sometimes, as I've learned in life, but it hasn't stopped me, sometimes you jump into things and you get yourself in, you know, a complicated mess. So thank you to you, Mr. Matthew. The principals who, you know, Kelly and the rest of the gang, who all let us put up signs, you know, gave us publicity. Kate and Pete actually sent out special emails because we hadn't managed to somehow get our flyer in. So thank you to all of you as well. And Mr. Murray, I don't want to forget about Mr. Murray, who coordinated getting the Gator back and forth. It was like, okay, well, wow, this is kind of like when you have somebody working for you, because they just did it. We didn't have to do a thing. So that was very much appreciated as well. And then finally, Mr. Josh was unbelievable. So he, you know, really, this would not have happened without him. He had his template. When we first met, Brandy and I kind of laughed, because when we first met, Josh came with all these, all his template, basically, for his event from 22, maybe, the Pumpkin Fest. And it was like, okay, so this is really going to happen, and it's really going to be huge. If it wasn't for him, we might have something a little bit smaller. But not only did he was, he's so organized and put so much time and effort into this, but he, and, you know, I knew what a great math teacher he was, but wow. And then, you know, last but certainly not least, we could not have done this without the students. So there were about 140 student volunteers. They worked all day long. Even at the end of the day, it was like, could you carry that box over? They were just tremendous. And, you know, I know that about our students, but to then see it in action was really great. And so I really appreciate the student council efforts and just really all the student volunteers. So I thought you should hear that, because I think it's important that we celebrate our community and realize what a big part of our community, our students and our families are. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Claudia.
Thanks, Claudia. And thank you and everybody else that put it on. I unfortunately missed it, but I heard it was a great success.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Ashland High School Student Advisory Council. Want to come on up?
Yeah, please. Good evening, everybody. As we talked a couple of weeks ago, the council is here for their first meeting to share some updates of the high school. They did elect Abhishek to continue as representative to join you for the year, obviously, sitting here at the table. We are missing one member tonight, Yash Biday, but he will be joining us next time. But we have three other reps with us today, and Abhishek, who are going to share, they'll introduce themselves and share some updates. So come on up, ladies, and just lean into the mic and...
Hello. Okay, there we go. My name is Zohar Saied Ali. I'm a member of the junior class. And over the past first month of school, we've had some really exciting events. I know she's already touched upon it, but Ashland Day was a great success for so many clubs. Bio Club, NHS, Make-A-Wish, so many different clubs came out, had events, and connected with the community, which was really big. Coming up on October 24th, we have the homecoming game and homecoming rally. We have multiple games planned for that. I know Stuko has planned a lot of things for that, and it's really exciting. And the homecoming dance will be on the 25th. Students are getting very excited about that. There's also been some very successful class fundraising. The class 2026 sold popcorn and cotton candy at the Ashland Day. 2027 sold crochet pumpkins made by students, and they were able to raise nearly $300. Class of 2028 are working on their class t-shirts and selling those. And class of 2029 is also selling class t-shirts.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ojel, and I'm also a member of the junior class. The, I'm sure you guys know of Make-A-Wish, which raises money and fundraises to help students, to help children with critical illnesses. They recently had a car wash, and it was their biggest car wash yet. They had so, they, nearly 100 cars came through. They, it became their most successful car wash yet. Also, they're recent, in a few weeks, they are going on their Give Kids a World trip. I have the opportunity to also go on that trip. And it's a trip to Disney World, and it's a trip to the Give Kids a World Village specifically. They get to volunteer and help families who get to visit. Academically, we have the PSATs coming up next week. For students who didn't sign up for the PSATs, such as sophomores, they have, they are doing a community service day. So they are able to find volunteer opportunities. Freshmen don't take the PSATs, so they also do a community service day. Seniors do a college exploration day. And most juniors do take the PSATs, and a lot of sophomores this year have signed up also. So speaking academically, I know me and Zohar are taking AP Bio this year, and I just wanted to share a little fun anecdote to, from Bio, just to, you know, give you guys insight on how our academic life is going. Today, we did a bio lab where we used agar cubes to represent the volume to surface ratio of cells. And it's just really nice that we get to have the opportunity to, to explore, to explore that and to figure out, and to figure out these, like, complex scientific things that didn't even seem possible, like, right in front of our eyes. So it just, it was just a really cool opportunity.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sophia Renetsky, and I'm also a junior. So in school so far, a lot of classes have definitely hit the ground running. For example, since the VHS grant for STEM classes ran out, a lot more people have been able to sign up to take AP Physics now that it's being offered in person. And as someone who's taking that class, I would say that it's been going pretty well so far. Additionally, juniors and seniors have been notified if they're eligible for National Honor Society, meaning that they have a 3.5 GPA or higher. And applications are due tomorrow, and I would say that the majority of people that are eligible are certainly applying for that. There have also been Ex-Block College visits going on weekly in the counseling office, and a lot of juniors and seniors have been finding them very useful and informative. And finally, fall sports have been in full sprint, full swing. Also, a lot of student athletes have met the new athletic director and have started to get to know him a little better. And that's all. Thank you.
Why don't we, just since we'll see you multiple times during the year, we hope, we can take a moment just to introduce ourselves to you as well. I'm Mark Terry. I'm vice chair of the school committee.
Paul Kendall.
Tina Fattanides.
I'm Marcy Culverwell.
Chris Matthews, Director of Finance Operations.
You know Abhishek, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Adams?
Probably know.
We're also missing Ms. Lori Tosti, who's usually here, and...
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna skip over her.
Who you'll meet on the trip.
Right, that's right. So thank you for coming in. You certainly don't need to stay, and we know you all have homework and other things to do. Thanks for, thanks for coming in. Nice to meet you all. Paul, do you have warrant approvals? Just gonna wait till you actually try.
Yeah.
Between September 11th, 2025, and October 8th, 2025, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payable in the amount of $898,645.03. This includes general fund expenses of $497,383.94, revolving expenses of $40169.12, grant expenses of $1,084.62, and meals, tax expenses of $7.35.
All right. Moving on, I think we're at superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'll keep this brief. I shared a memo with you that I wrote with regard to some of the Department of Education, elementary and secondary education regulatory changes that are coming down the pipeline, that have occurred over the past two years. One, obviously, was the ballot two question last year with the MCAS being removed as competency determination. However, in tonight's agenda, we have three policies that relate specifically to these regulatory requirements, and they're all first reads, but just the overlay of where we are. The competency determination, we did speak about last year. That was part of a graduation requirement through DESI was, had, MCAS was that requirement years ago. We do not have that. Last year, the school committee did pass with work through the high school, what we deemed to be competency determination, in terms of passing our classes and assessments at the end, ensuring that the frameworks have been met. So what you'll see tonight is really just a boiler template that MAS C put together. It does meet all of the requirements that we set forth last year, which is, we, Kelly and I went back and forth with it, and Mike, to make sure that everything we talked about last year here is accounted for within that document. That, so the Department of Ed has sort of put the onus on districts to now submit our policies to the department for approval, which has never happened before. So we have to submit by December 31st, not only the competency determination policy, but a graduation policy. So we have a graduation policy, obviously, and it's more, you know, stringent than the state requirements, if you will, of graduation. So that is also something before you tonight, is the first read. It's really, nothing has changed with it, just some language. And then the last piece that we'll get to tonight is called the middle school pathway exploration. And, you know, I know Mark has been integrally involved, at least with Keith Tech, in terms of, the department again has now decided that policies need to be written for districts of sending districts to vocational technical schools, but then vocational technical schools have their own policies in terms of how they're admitting students. Our, our policy specifically relates to the eighth grade in just documenting all of the things we do already, in terms of notifying students, sending students to Keith on a tour, by September 15th, having the addresses of all of our eighth grade students, seventh grade students submitted to Keith, so they can send out a letter to those families. So we're doing all these things already. It's just now memorializing it in a policy. But that is due November 1st. I was at the Tri-County Superintendent's meeting yesterday, and 40 superintendents, and of that, probably 25 to almost 30 of them, more than half, are filing waivers to submit their policies. I look at it this way. I'd rather submit the policy and have them come back and say, hey, Jim, you're missing this, as opposed to just putting one more thing on the back burner, due January 1st, when the competency determination and the graduation policies are all due. I want to get these off our plate, partly because we have, last year, we did our coordinated program review, and Mike and I are in the process of cleaning up, and Brittany did a great job as it related to special education. But Kelly and the principals in the past week have spent a lot of time looking at our handbook based on DESI's recommendations, in ensuring that, that all of the legal references are in our handbooks. We're pretty sure that's comfortable and cleared up. Jen King has been involved the entire way. I think the department is asking for more, even more than what Jen thinks were required, but Jen's like, okay, if that's what they want, just give it to them, so you can have them off your back. And starting in November, so we have a meeting on Friday, Gretchen and I, we're going through a district review with the department. It's separate than a coordinated program review. So a district review means they're coming into the community. They'll want to interview you as school committee members. They'll look at our finance component. They'll look at the relationships with our community and our town. They'll be, and we've got a couple of teachers here, but they'll be in our, our schools, actually visiting classrooms, and, and looking at what it's like to be in a classroom, a student in a classroom in the Ashland Public Schools. And they have their own rubrics. They're not evaluative in the sense of, for our teachers, they're evaluative as a district in a whole. So that's all coming up in the next, like, month. It's DESI, 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 DESI. And it's part of the conversation we had yesterday with Mary Burke, who's the executive director of the Superintendent Association, is, this is just too much. It's too much that the department is putting on districts. We also have NAEP. So we have the, or no, we have NAEP this year, yeah, so middle school testing, in addition to the MCAS testing. So it's, I don't know, Ashland just being at the top of the, you know, the alphabetical order. It seems like we're just getting chosen for everything. But we don't have choices either. I mean, we could always push back and say, we're doing this and this. But again, I'm of the mindset, let's just get it done with and be done with it.
Do you think there's any, any kind of substantive value of feedback that comes out of these things that, if we're just looking at it charitably, might give us an opportunity to improve, or is this really just checking boxes for the state?
I think there's potential. Do I, I think always revealing, say, your, your bullying prevention intervention plan is a great thing, right? I mean, it's something we should be doing on a regular basis. If we're looking at our handbook to ensure that all regulatory requirements are in there, yeah, those are good things. But we do that on a yearly basis through site councils, but we do it with our attorneys to make sure that we have everything we need. I think I'll be interested to see what the district review entails, because I have not, I have not participated in a specific one like this. So Friday, I'll know better. But yeah, I think evaluating our systems is always a good thing, right? It's sort of, it's a deeper dive into our strategic plan, if you will, too, right? It's, we have to take, do a survey. Our faculty and staff will do surveys. They'll, they'll survey administrative team. They're going to look at your culture of your school in terms of your working relationships with the community. So yeah, there's, there's some things that couldn't, can come out of this, but it's just a lot of checking of boxes, for sure.
Any questions?
Do you expect any, like, real substantive changes to the graduation policy, or is it more like a, like a checkbox?
Yeah, no. So for us, we'll get into the policy in a little bit, but there are no substantive changes to our graduation policy at all. The state is absolutely looking at creating a standard graduation requirement. Do I think they will legislate that in the future? I do. But I also think our standards are higher than theirs, that they will settle on, and therefore, I don't foresee anything changing for us.
Most of, most of what they're looking for is wanting certain things in the policy. It's not changes to anything we're doing, but they just want certain things in certain policies, and they want us to submit it for review. So there's...
Kind of memorializing.
Yeah. It's more about how things are structured where they are than...
Mike, superintendent's report.
Sure. All of our curriculum nights have completed at this point. They were a success. I think folks were able to learn all about what's happening in our public schools on a regular basis. And I think that for many of our first timers, it's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity to understand what we do here in, at Warren, in particular. I think the kindergarten folks always appreciate that opportunity. But for all of our schools, we thank our principals and teachers for taking the time to make sure that everybody has a true understanding of what happens day in and day out for our students. Our vertical curriculum leadership team meetings have begun. Our math team met yesterday. We hold one meeting a week essentially. So next, next week will be, in two weeks, we'll have ELA, and then science will be happening as well. So we meet once a month to just talk about a curriculum alignment, really, and we look at data. So those are really quality meetings to ensure that everything is, is happening the way we want it to happen. One of the things we talked about in math yesterday was, again, looking at how our students are doing with accelerated math. We did a lot of work with that, and we're really following a particular cohort of kids to see, are they succeeding now that we've, you know, changed the way we do things a little bit? And so far, so far, so good. So we're happy with the progress we're making there. All of our assessment windows for the elementary students are complete at this time, as well as the middle school. So iReady is done. Across the board, our dibbles, our initial dibbles work is done as well. So now, data team meetings are taking place at Mendez and Warren especially, and they are using that data to really inform instructional practices. I had a great meeting today with Pete and Kate regarding the data work that's happening at Warren and Mendez, and I'm really excited about some of the things that Kate is implementing, especially with the development of formative and summative assessments that will become common assessments for our students that are going to be specifically based on the standards that we're seeing as potential weaknesses based on our iReady data. So it's already, there's already a really good change going on that is data-based, working with what we're learning from the iReady assessment. MCAS results will be mailed to families on Tuesday, October 14th. The embargo has been officially lifted now, so you will find those in your mailboxes within, I imagine, a few days after the 14th. In terms of educator evaluation, our principals and our deans and assistant principals and our special education coordinators and directors are off and running. Our non-starter observations have begun, and our first educator evaluation committee, as we look to, to make some changes to our rubric. That first meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 27th. We know we still have a lot of work to do, but we're excited to take on this task, continuing the work that we started last year. Professional learning update, Friday is an early release day for all, all students K to 12. And we have professional learning that's going to be happening in elementary school in our ever-evolving attempt to communicate with families the best way we possibly can. We're going to be taking a good hard look at our report cards, and Mr. Regan has touched upon this through his site council report and his school improvement plan report. There are going to be some significant work that's done at the elementary level in terms of ensuring that we are reporting accurately to families about the successes of our students. So some great work is going to be done tomorrow to really start that process, to ensure that we're looking at standards, but also how are we reporting these standards to our, our, our parents. So tomorrow, I know they're going to be doing some, some protocols around the current report card, and how we can make sure that we can make some improvements to provide folks with a better view of, of their child's development. At the high school and the middle school, we're going to be doing a variety of activities, curriculum development, data analysis. We're going to be exploring a few new potential curriculums, specifically in science. And there's also going to be some universal design for learning work, UDL, as it's called. So for alphabet soup folks, universal design for learning is essentially ensuring all students are getting what they need all the time, and then we're using that scope to plan our lessons. Year two teachers will have our first visit of, of, of the year with our partners in Mendon Upton and Milford the week of the 20th. So we're taking a group to Mendon Upton on the 21st, taking a group to Milford on the 22nd, and we'll be hosting a group of year two teachers from Mendon Upton and Milford on the 23rd. And finally, our first safety committee meeting of the year is scheduled for tomorrow. We had our first district-level MTSS meeting. As you know, that's a major, major goal for us this year is to, is to improve our MTSS work. We had a great conversation yesterday with our district leadership team regarding our current practices and what we're doing, and where we need to go. And lastly, based on the CPR that Jim had just discussed, I'm developing a survey that will need to be sent out to students and families, hopefully by the end of October, to look at equity and access for a variety of different educational opportunities, including AP classes, honors classes, extracurricular activities, as well as athletics. So it's going to encompass everything to make sure folks are truly understanding all that we have to offer.
Any questions for Mike?
All right. Action items, discussion updates, votes. Our first one is travel proposal for
Introduce yourselves for us.
You bet. Hi, my name is Mary Namath. I am a music teacher at Ashland High School.
And I'm Mike Worster.
We are very excited to propose what we think is a pretty fabulous trip for spring break 2027. We worked closely with EF to create this custom itinerary that is really going to hit history and music really hard. We're going to start in Berlin. And Mr. Worster, would you mind maybe highlighting the history?
Sure.
Heavy hitters here, and all hit music.
So one of the things that Mary just said is that this was customized, and one of the reasons why we did that is because the initial blueprint for this trip was going through some other countries, and I suggested that we go through Berlin.
Get a close to the mic.
Wait, is someone...
Use the microphone.
Am I loud enough? That's...
Sorry. So we wanted to make sure that we were going through Berlin. Berlin is a fantastic city. There's a lot to do indoors in terms of museums, but there's a lot that's outdoors. It's very much an archaeological city. You can see, you know, remnants of the Berlin Wall, for example, from the 1960s that was brought down in November 1989. And you could also see rubble piles that remain from the, the Second World War. So there's a lot to see outside just by walking around, and then there's things to do inside as well. From Berlin, we're going to shift and go down to Munich, Germany, and there's a lot to do there. You know, Munich is the heart of Bavaria. If you've ever been there, if you've ever been to Munich, you've probably been to the Hofbrauhaus, Marionplatz and whatnot. We're going to do walking tours there. We're going to move around, you know, from one location to another before moving over to Salzburg. Salzburg in Austria is really where, you know, the music kind of takes over, both in Salzburg and then in Vienna. There's a number of music selections, and I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, you bet.
But along with that, we're going to stop at Mahausen, which is, you know, between Salzburg and Vienna. And we're going to go to a concentration camp there, which is a difficult day. It's a travel day. And the last time that I brought kids to Germany, which would have been in 2009, I believe, we went to a concentration camp, and that, that buffer of time on the bus was really good time, because it was time where people were just checked out from the group and into their own emotions, where they could kind of process what was going on. So they planned this well. So they planned this well, at least in my opinion, as to when they're doing it and, you know, what's around that moment in time. You want to speak about?
Thank you so much, Mr. Worster. You bet, you bet. And one other history piece, in Berlin, we're also going to visit the topography of Terror Museum, which also is going to provide really great background for students. The music piece, oh, my goodness. When we go to Salzburg, we are going on a Sound of Music tour, which is going to be utterly magical. We're also going to visit Mozart's birthplace. And during the travels, I will be giving information like during X blocks and while we journey together about Beethoven and Mozart. We actually get to go to a classical concert in Vienna, which is going to be wonderful. And I'm going, some of the students are reticent about going to a classical concert. But I am going to walk them through how to enjoy a classical concert and the things to think about and teach them the music ahead of time so it is familiar. Talking about like absolute music versus program music, absolute music being like music for music's sake, like Beethoven Symphony Five, bum, 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 doesn't tell a story. It's just music for music's sake. But something like Peter, Peter and the Wolf does tell a story. And so talking about about those things and how to like have like a little movie in their brain as they're listening to incredibly beautiful music. So, yeah, I think that kind of highlights. Our itinerary. What questions do you have for us?
So if you've been watching for preparation for this, you know what this question should be, but we'll see what happens.
So one of our things is always about equity. And, you know, most of these trips are kind of pricey. So what are you doing to ensure that we get any student that is has interest, regardless of the cost, to raise their hand and show that interest upfront? So we can we can make sure that we can accommodate them.
Yeah, it's a fantastic question. And as the advisor to the CARES team, which is our equity group in the high school, I really appreciate that question. So, yes, these trips are certainly very expensive. EF offers, it's essentially like a student GoFundMe page. So they will give each student a link and they can share it with family and friends for donations. They also have a global citizen scholarship fund, which they offer $100,000 in scholarships every year. And any student can apply, and it is both merit and needs based. And then obviously, here in Ashland, we have the Helping Our Own Fund. And the time between when we are pitching this trip to when it actually takes place, it's 18 months. A lot of schools introduce a trip in September and they go in spring. That's a really tight window for families and for students. And so the thinking is with 18 months, it gives our high school students an opportunity if they, you know, can, you know, want to pick up some extra money, maybe during summer, part-time job, et cetera. Gives families and students a bit more time.
Yeah, so I I think the key, one of the keys is just how you're going to message it initially to ensure that they don't look at a price. I mean, we have plenty of students that if it was $400.
You bet.
We can't do that, right? But make sure that they're going to show up to that initial thing and and show and show that interest to make sure that they understand that that shouldn't be a reason for not showing up and expressing that interest.
Understood.
No, I'm jealous. It sounds fabulous.
I was thinking, can we ask you to do this for adults?
I know, I know.
I was just going to, to kind of pick up on Paul's question, mark to you, Kelly. Do you have a sense of, as a practical matter, how successful we're being in ensuring that students do come in and pursue an interest that they have? You know, to Paul's point, a lot of it's how we message these opportunities. Do all kids come and do we find that there's enough people asking for help and support financially and that we're able to meet that? To know whether we're doing a good job in that, I know we can always be doing better. But I'm just looking for anything anecdotal that that kind of speaks to that.
I I don't know if I can speak to that. We we get everybody that wants to walk in the door. I do say when we, you know, we talk about the Helping Our Own Fund, we have worked with families to say, let's work out a plan for how like the the fund can help make the deposit or the fund can help on the back end. Once we see that you've made a commitment to or you have the ability to get to a certain point. I, this is the first time hearing about their scholarship fund that EF has. So that's really exciting. And and I know that these guys will do an amazing job. I think just talking about them as advisors and some of the things that I see them do, they do an excellent job using our X block to get kids in to advertise things. And so I have full confidence in them really getting out there and talking about those opportunities for kids and and how we can support them.
I would imagine a lot of the success is how we do, how are we doing with the connectedness that we talk about? Because having a trusted adult for those students that might need that help. So how are we doing there? I think that would, that's probably one of the, you know, good mechanisms that if we ensure that all those kids have somebody that they're trusted, they're comfortable talking to, we're going to, you know, be able to ensure that somebody's hearing that and and then helping them through a process. Because with EF, the other thing about EF that it's a bit intimidating, there's there's no, they don't make the sign up. The sign up's daunting. You have to put in your credit card. You have to put the deposit down. It doesn't sound like a lot, but hey, 95 bucks or whatever it is, that might be. And then you have to say, I'm going to pay X amount. So I don't know if they've changed, but that's the way it's been for other EF trips. And so I just know that even from somebody like, I look at it from a lens of what if I was? I had a child go last year on one of the trips. And, you know, I look at it from that lens. And I I still talk to Mr. McGann about it, like, how can we help help EF with that? Because it seems intimidating, like, I'm signing my life away. I'm saying, hey.
It's a commitment, right?
Yeah, you're you're when you when you sign up and just reserve your spot, you are doing that. And for a family that's in a position that I don't have, I don't, I can't commit to $4,400 or whatever it is and paying, you know, $400 a month for the next however long, right? That's that's intimidating.
Anything else on the trip? Not is there a motion? Got a green light to him.
You were jumping in, so I.
Well, I have to look up the title of the trip, right? Okay, I make a motion. My only my second motion. So that's how strongly I feel about it. I make a motion to approve the Nemeth Worster Euro Trip 2027 to Austria.
Second.
One favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Sounds like a great trip. All right. Next item on the agenda is another travel proposal from boys basketball coach Mike Norman, who appears to be on Zoom.
I'm sorry that I can't be there in person.
No worries. Happy to have you.
Great. Thanks for thanks for giving me a few minutes. This has now become an annual tradition for me to come and request your permission to bring the varsity boys basketball team on. And overnight this year, we would be going to Craigville Beach and the Centerville area on Cape Cod. And the reason that I think this is a valuable experience for the 12 to 15 young men that would come with me is that I use this as an opportunity really to teach leadership. And and I see my role as an athletic coach much more about helping to develop the character and leadership traits that we value in the community. And getting a chance to do that away from the gym, away from school for one night is a really important and and I think great experience. I use the Jeff Jansen Leadership Training Manual, for anyone that might be familiar with with his work. And we spend really just a day, we we go down on a Saturday morning, we do play a basketball scrimmage and then continue on to to Centerville and spend the day on a whole bunch of different leadership training activities that force the players to speak to each other, to do a little journaling and reflecting on their own. And really just spending time together as a group prior to our season. And so the the cost per player is as minimal as we can. We try to get it into the $50 to $75 per player range. And for any players that that cost is prohibitive, we have fundraising. We cover most of the trips through our fundraising. And for anyone for whom that cost is prohibitive, we we will cover that for them.
And any, any, anything you'd like to highlight that you're doing differently this year than than the previous years?
So, I mean, each year, we we try to pick one particular area of focus. I try not to spoil that, but I'm sure I I can imagine many of my players are not sitting here glued to their TVs watching the school committee meeting. Our focus this year really is just on the concept of team and what does it mean to be a part of a team, both from a sporting standpoint and also team in a community, team in a family. And I I really value what that word means. And so this year, the focus is just going to be on what are all the components that make a successful team? And I think for for young men, that's a really valuable lesson, both what it means in a classroom, in a school, on a team and all that. So that's the focus this year. So we have a couple of different activities from from Jeff Jansen that we'll use to focus on that.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make my third whole motion. I make a motion for the boys basketball team to travel out of state on December 13th to 14th to the Craigsville Retreat Center in Centerville.
Second.
Any further discussion? I didn't ask that before. Any further discussion there? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
No opposition. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next order of business is the 2627 school calendar.
This will be me, yeah. So as I try to do every year, I try to get our school calendar organized and approved as early as possible. So families can start their planning process in the summer of '26 and then throughout the year of '27. This year's calendar or next year's calendar is a little complex in in a couple of ways. One is the September 7th is Labor Day. It's the latest it can be. The last time this occurred was in in 2015 for us. And the the union contract is specific with regard to when we can start school. So the option one that you're looking at is a contractually obligated contract calendar as as written into the AEA contract. So meaning this, teachers would come back the Monday before Labor Day, which is the 31st. So the 31st and the first are the typical professional development days. Students come Wednesday and Thursday. And again, contractually, the the Friday before Labor Day is a is a day off. So and that's traditionally how we do things, right? Next year, a couple of our religious observances happen to be on weekends, so they do not, they're not impacting the length of the calendar. The 180 days is 180 days, right? So that's why I try to remind staff, we're still doing 180 days. We build a calendar for 180 plus five for potential snow days or other days because we know I don't do snow days. But so the way this calendar works, option one that that I'm presenting to you is as follows. It ends, I think that's where it begins on the 31st for teachers. It ends on the 21st of of June. That would be the 180th day. If we had five snow days, it pushes everything out to the June 28th, okay? So that, this is a calendar that abides by the contract. Second option, any any questions on this option? We can come back to it.
Yeah, just, it's a question I've never thought about. Juneteenth, when it's on a weekend?
That doesn't matter. So we actually looked that up. It's the, it they, it is, if it's a Saturday, it's a Saturday. If it's a Friday, it's a Friday. But no, they do not, some federal would say holidays, they'll do, they'll do a Friday if it's a Saturday or a Monday if it's a Sunday.
Yeah.
This is not one of them.
Okay.
That's a great question because Mike and I and Chris actually sat with the entire AEA board. So the paraprofessionals, the teachers, as well as nurses and administrative assistants. We sat with them and presented this, these options as well. And I'll get into that in a moment. So, good question. They had that same question, as did I. So Gretchen and I made sure that we were clear on that. So then, option two, right? This option is a calendar that would require a couple of things to happen. One, it would require the AEA, National Educators Association, to amend their contract for a year, have a memorandum of understanding with with the school committee. And it'd require the school committee to to agree to that memorandum. So what this would do would would bring educators back, the term I use is the week before the week before, right? So as required in the contract. So on Wednesday and Thursday, the 26th and 27th of August, and students would then come in starting that Monday, the 31st. So they would be in school for four days versus two days, right? So they would still have that Friday off because contractually, that's part of the, you know, the contract. And then Labor Day is the 7th. What this does is, again, you think two days don't matter. Well, it does in terms of the end date is now June 17th, right? Two school days earlier, so the 18th and the and the 21st. I can tell you with this calendar, these two options that were presented, Kristin Scully, who is the the president of the union, sent out, I sent out a survey, first and foremost, giving the two options to to the staff, saying, if you had one or two, which would you choose? 80% said two. That's not good enough. They actually have to have a ratification vote of that change. So Kristin had a vote with the entire organization and the union membership. And 85% of the respondents chose option two. They would prefer option two next year for a one-year change to the calendar, right? This is not in perpetuity. It's a one-year adjustment. And it wouldn't, part of it is, the contract ends in June of '27 anyway. But they are in total agreement that this is the contract, that the calendar they would like and that they would adjust to modify the calendar in the contract for one year. So that's where we are with the calendar. Questions?
I'm assuming that 85% would get them enough to, that's the enough a percentage for them to.
Fifty to ratify.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they 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 ratified it at 85%. I will say they ratified it.
They already did.
They did a ratification vote.
Okay, okay.
They they actually voted. 85% were were in favor.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't clear with that, Tina. Thank you. Yeah.
No, I mean, the second option makes sense to me.
Last thing we need.
Yeah, we don't need two of these, right?
What are you looking for for?
So what I'm looking for the committee to do is to approve option two for the calendar for '26, '27. But what that requires is for the school committee to agree to suspend her term, I don't know what term I used when I wrote it this morning. Let's suspend the the contractual obligation in a very specific section, which happens to be, yeah, section six.
We emailed those.
Yeah, Article Six, Section G. So and I think, Paul, you probably have a better language. I wrote it to you this morning, but.
Yeah, I can bring it up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so let's just.
But that's what we need.
Is there consensus around supporting the calendar two?
Yes.
There's no, okay, so no concern of that. And what at the conversation, the email exchange I had with Jim this morning was because you're talking about doing something different than what you have committed to in writing, right, by the CBA? There should be something in writing. Most collective bargaining agreements have a provision that says if you're going to amend or or execute a waiver, it ought to be in writing. If you don't do that, then in theory, somebody could change their mind, like, no, we didn't agree to that. Right, vote or no vote. I'm I'm sure that would not happen as a practical matter, but attorneys, you know, being attorneys, right? So so I suggested, you know, some simple language and put together an MOA. Don't know the, you haven't circulated the MOA.
I did not. No, here it is. I can share it with you.
I was going to say, so I think there there are two options, right? So if the. So if the group is in support of the calendar, we can just vote the calendar, then we can vote to authorize Jim to execute an MOA that carries out that vote. And then that gives you the flexibility to play with wording if you need to, Kristen, and just take care of it. Or we can vote to enter into the MOA, which kind of takes care of both. We typically vote the calendar itself in any circumstance anyway, so I think we should do that. So have you, have you had a chance to work with Kristen on the MOA?
Yes, and she is, she's a hundred percent.
Okay. So why don't I suggest this first, let me take a motion to approve one of the calendars, and then we'll deal with the MOA second.
Perfect.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve option two, the Ashland Public School calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Passes for nothing. And then in terms of entering to an agreement with the AEA to execute on what we just voted on for our calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, Jim's got something projected here. I, I'd looked at this this morning, I don't know if you made any changes to it after, it was just the original draft.
Yep.
But I trust that this executes on what we're talking about. So we can either vote to enter into that and then let Lori sign off on it, or we can just authorize Jim to sign on.
Yeah, maybe just, we could do a motion that would authorize him to enter into the agreement that would effectuate the.
Fake motion, right? Or was that it?
There you go.
There you go.
There was a motion, is there a second or Paul's motion?
Second. Second, I mean, sorry.
Third.
Third. See, this would happen, she got in a roll, and we went out of cycle. All right, so we have a motion, a second, to authorize the superintendent to enter into an MOA regarding the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
I, one question to follow up with this, I noticed in the language of it, it mentioned for, for teachers. Do you, do we need separate ones for staff and other unions, or is, will this encompass what we needed to accomplish?
There's no specific language in any of the other contracts.
Okay, perfect.
Good question, yeah.
Okay, good, you got a calendar.
Thank you.
As early as we ever get that done.
Right.
Next item on the agenda is policies first read. Each one of them, you already talked a little bit about them, or Paul, you're in the policy subcommittee, but anybody want to speak to what we're doing here?
I certainly can, Paul, you can chime in, please, and Kelly's here as well. But again, these are first reads, as I mentioned earlier in the, in the statement, in the superintendent's report, is what we need to do is submit these to the Department of Ed. This, this is due December thirty-first. The graduation requirements of Ashland High School are not changing. The language, we're, we're just striking in here, the language about freshman wellness and sophomore wellness as point two-five and point seven-five. What's required by law is that they have health and wellness all four years that they're offered. It doesn't specify how much time. It can be one day in a cycle for a quarter. They don't specify what that is. That's where Mass General, I'm just quoting the law, or putting the link into the law. We have a policy at the high school that you have one credit, you need a credit in PE and wellness. So, a minimum of what, point two, a quarter a year. What this will do, by cleaning up the language of must include freshman point five wellness and sophomore point two-five, is, allows Kelly some flexibility with her scheduling as well. You don't necessarily have to have wellness in your sophomore year, or even your freshman year, we just choose to have it there. So.
Well, it does, it still says at least a quarter credit per year in the first line.
Correct. Right, you have to have a quarter credit.
But it doesn't have to be the freshman wellness.
Correct.
I got you, okay.
And again, we changed years ago athletics, if you participate in athletics, you can seek a waiver for that year's.
Do you want to add to this?
There's nothing, I mean, again, there's no other changes in the policy, it's just cleaning that language up. Is that correct, Kelly?
Any questions on this? This is just first reads, so initial reactions, if people have, digest something else and have some other concerns, you can either refer it back to Jim, or it will be another time that should be put on the agenda for approval. The only thing, Jim, that I see is, that sentence says, students who participate in high school athletic teams may have this requirement waived by local districts.
Yep.
I don't know if you need the local district piece there.
Okay.
Because it's right ours.
Yep.
But I thought, isn't it true that that can only be done like once?
One time.
One time?
Yep.
Maybe it needs to be specific on that particular piece, too.
Yep.
If that's still the case. Okay, you want to move on to the next one?
Sacra la bleu. Okay. Okay, let's see, the next one would be. Competency, graduation, copy of, that's, what is this? Graduation, sorry. Competency determination. Yeah, I just want to pull it up, though. I had, I had all the others.
I wanted to use the high-tech one.
I had all the others on the, okay. So for the competency determination, again, this is just about taking the language from MASC in, in our language, and putting it into a policy. Everything here, so the one thing that we're missing right now, and I'll be clear, so we've gone through all of this, this comes directly out of the law that you have to have. So the one thing that's missing is what's here in red. We're going through the process of identifying the course numbers. So Desi has a list of courses that has a very specific number, if you will, that has to correlate to what we have in IPASS. And, and so our course name, instead of Algebra One, we might call it something different. But it is meeting the frameworks of Algebra One, right? So, so however the name may not match up, we have to make sure the codes match up. So we will list those codes in here, so when the department is looking at it and they see a different name, they're, we're just saying this is in alignment. And we know we have some work to do to clean that up, to make sure that, that it meets the, you know, the state requirements.
And if, you've been with us long enough to know our normal conversation of, yes, we typically wouldn't want to put that in policy.
Right.
But the state is making us put it in the policy, not just linked to.
Correct.
A publication of it, so unfortunately, that's what we need to do here. It's typically what we try to do, is say, the superintendent or designated will publish this and potentially link to where that's published, but, because it's not policy, but.
Right. And, and the other piece that, that you'll notice, too, is the appeals process, that's what they're going to look for, right? So students who come into your district and/or students who have been in your district, they can appeal whether or not they've met the competency determination. So remember, this is not the graduation requirement. If, if, if students met our graduation requirements, they will always meet the competency determination. That's just the way it's going to be. That's not necessarily the case in the past. They could have met our graduation requirements, but not past the MCAS, right? So this is, you know, just their way of saying, okay, how are you ensuring that students are meeting the curriculum framework standards through their sophomore year, basically, of math, ELA, and history? US history is going to be on here that you have to have, so it's a graduation requirement.
I'm assuming before the second read, you'll kind of have these.
I will have it done there, yeah, I just, I highlighted it in red, because we're still working on the.
Right, right, right. That's fair, yep.
That's all.
Well, it, just for, for the list that you'll, and it's fine, I would assume it's fine if you share us a link.
Yeah, yeah.
With just the numbers in here, but will this, will you include like the names of the courses? Just because I'm, I'm curious.
It will be.
Right.
They will be in this document.
Right, exactly, okay, fair.
Before our next meeting, they will all be in that document.
Awesome, thank you.
Will this one be reviewed annually? Like, how often do the course, just because, I don't want to get lost in the shuffle if.
The state is requiring us to review it and to submit each year an attestation that we've reviewed it.
Okay.
There, there are more layers to this I'm not even mentioning, that I have to go through.
It's only because it's so, like you said, out of the norm to put like such detail into a policy that then has to come before the committee. So I just don't want the committee to lose, like, this is one we got to look at every September, October, whatever, and what cadence is.
Well, Desi's also building the ship as they're floating it, right? With, when it comes to this.
Sure are.
Except, except we're not sure if it's floating, that's all.
That's, that's fair, that's fair, yeah. They're building it as they move along, so it's.
It's likely to change in a couple of years.
Well, I was just going to say, so I expect it to.
But we are, but we have to attest every single year and, and submit that we've reviewed it, yes. To answer your question, we're required to do that. So the last.
Everybody good on that policy?
Yeah, yep.
Now you can jump in.
The last one policy that, that we're looking at tonight is, again, another, thanks, Kel.
Thank you, Kelly.
She's excited to have all those policies, right? It is, again, out of department regulations, that, that we need to have a policy written and approved by the committee and then submitted to the department, saying, hey, we are, in fact, telling the students who go to the Ashland Public Schools that there are different pathways to success after middle school, right? So that includes, oh, meeting at the high school to talk about the program studies, eighth grade step-up night at the high school. This is what we have to offer you. Or B, Keefe Tech, right? Going to Keefe Tech, hearing from Keefe Tech, having information, Aaron does surveys. Aaron does, has opportunities for Keefe Tech to come in and talk about, you know, what offers they have over there, opportunities they have. So again, this is about the state going forward and saying, we have to meet our regulations, how are you going to do this? We took this pathway, again, MASC, and then we included all of the language in the things that we specifically do, like informing students of, of these pathways. These are things we currently do and have been doing for years. We meet the requirements of what the department is asking us to do, it's just memorializing it. And again, once we have to do this and, you know, send it in, attest to it every single year, and review it. And you'll notice it's just really procedural stuff that we do.
Well, just, I can jump in for a little bit on this one. My understanding is that Desi has been non-committal, whether or not this should be school committee policy, like it's being presented, or whether it's sufficient to put it into the handbook at the middle school. And to the extent that they don't seem to be requiring school committee, and I will say, I've been asked this question by clients, and I've said to them, if this is all procedural, right, and it's all things that the middle school is going to take care of in terms of the hows, which is not typically our role, I've encouraged people to leave this as a, as a middle school handbook issue, or I think it belongs in the handbook. I'm not saying we have to do it that way, and Desi is saying, you guys figure it out, you know?
We'll let you know if we object, it sounds like.
Right, something like that, right. And so I always say that because we're obviously considering it as a school committee policy. I don't know whether you, either of you has a strong opinion, or whether Aaron does. But I put that out there, because I'm, I'd be perfectly fine leaving this to the middle school to adopt, to administration to adopt, because it is, as Jim said, it's very procedural in the interim. And it, if it were truly a policy of the school committee, this would be, in my view, exercise of micromanagement by us. Right, we're telling you, go do it this way, and that's not, that's not the way you're going to operate.
I, I would imagine that what they, they will absolutely require is that we have a policy stating that this will be in, we'd be published in a certain, certain way.
That shall do it, right?
Yeah, so, so I think we need something.
Well, this needs to be posted online, I mean, they've been very clear as to what we need to do with this, as well.
So I, because I had the same conversation, as you can imagine what we talked about in the last policy, this policy goes to the nth degree of what is this doing in policy, right? Because we typically handle this by, the superintendent or designated would do something, right? So, you know, so I, I think where we left it, Jim, is you believe that this is the right way, at least for now.
For now.
We can always change it. You know, and, and I, I mentioned this during our policy subcommittee meeting. I like that they're doing this, because if you, if you go back, you know, how long we've been on the school committee, I remember the first couple of years, we went down to a conference, and I was in just utter disbelief at the narrative that was being pushed at the time of trades are dead, you know? And they were just completely off the reservation, and I'm sure there's lots of districts that don't really see all these pathways as great opportunities and equal, right? So, so having, forcing everybody to ensure that they are communicating those things, I think is a good thing. But whether it belongs here, I, I agree with you, I, I think it's, it doesn't necessarily belong dictated like this in our policy. But I, I believe, Jim, and I want to put words in your mouth, this is the path you would recommend at this time.
Yeah, again, I, I think it's just easier for us just to do this and, and to submit it. Again, I go back to all their, and I'm highlighting the word policy, policy, policy in, in Desi's documentation that they send us in guidance every week. They refer to it as a policy. I just need to have it as a policy for now, and be done with it. And then see what, if they then revert to saying, well, these are really procedural things, and you don't need to have it in your policy handbook, then, then we can remove it.
The, the other thing is, instead of us being the one to put our toe in the water and test their, their patience, or what they want to do, let somebody else do it, and then if there's, and then if there's a precedent.
Jeff pissed you off today.
Jim, I have a question in terms of, you know, kind of the, the, not referrals, but the sharing of information on Keefe Tech. I know that we have a very small number of students that sometimes go to Norfolk Aggie.
Yeah.
Are we responsible for sharing information on that programming as well, or?
We're not.
No, okay.
It's, if we're, if you were in a regional agreement, which we are.
That's the one that we have to focus on, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Any, any other initial comments? So, I mean, maybe just quick thoughts from both of you, if you haven't chimed in. Opinion of, of sort of policy statement like Paul, Artic, and I agree with you on that part, is that we should have a, if we need to have something, it could be something that says, the middle school shall maintain, or administration's responsible for developing, right, procedures.
Comply with.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, as one pathway. But do either of you have an opinion you want to voice at this point about handbook, handbook versus policy? Just because, I mean, we decide how we come forward, depending on what the sort of consensus is at this point.
Yeah, no, I mean, I hear exactly what you're saying in terms of, you know, is this actually the school committee's role to have in our policies? This level of detail in terms of what needs to happen, and on a procedural level? And I agree, no, it doesn't. That being said, because of the way that Desi is rolling this out, and I'm assuming this is all from their guides on the career technical education, which is, they just threw so much information out there, and it's such a big push. I would imagine this is another thing that's going to kind of work its way out, right? As they, as they have to stay on top of districts for it. But, you know, I would err on the side of having it included rather than not. At this point, since they, if they do reference policy that often, this is, this is where we have policy, right? It's, I don't see a harm in doing it that way, but I agree with you and I hear your point. I think it would be fine to do it either way, but to kind of err on the side of not having to come back and redo it.
I guess I fall in the minority, and I'm the non-lawyers, but like, my inclination is you keep as high a level as possible in a policy, and the rest goes to point somewhere else for the procedure. So my inclination is to not put every, you know, date and metric milestone in a policy and to refer to the handbook. But that's, you know, coming from a whole different business lens, so.
That's valid, yeah.
I think we're all absolutely in agreement with that. I'm just trying to.
It's sort of more a question of what are we sitting, are we sitting better?
What will be the requirement from Desi at this point, yeah?
I mean, my, my inclination, like, on the first read is that the beginning, you know, makes sense, and then you'd say, you know, we're going to, and you take the subheaders, like, our procedure will have informing students of pathways, and, you know, pick a couple other things in here, regional school tours, and the process, you know, in the handbook.
Yeah.
I just, I, I am always a fan of as little as possible in the policy and as much as possible in the procedure, because it just gives more flexibility to the people that have to manage it, and, you know.
Yeah.
But I'll do, you know, I'll defer to the lawyers at the end of the day.
I think the lawyers agree with you.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
And I would, you know, I'm, I'm a very stubborn person in general, I would take a stand, hold hard to be against, against doing it in policy, and I would probably say, hey, let's stick our necks out if we had more capacity, and we weren't burdened with everything else that Jim, that Jim had mentioned. And it's like, you know.
Well, I guess that's the question, because I don't, you know, I don't live this, Jim. So if you turn it in as a policy that just has, you know, we do this and.
Right, to simplify it a little and take the data.
To simplify it, but you still have all this as a second document, is it just that you have to go back again? Is that the problem?
That's my guess, I don't know, I mean, that's my guess, I, we have no clue, so. So our, again, yesterday, meeting with fellow, forty fellow superintendents, nobody's got a clue here, right? So it's like, this, what we've drafted here, this is what a lot of people are submitting. And, and we do believe it's procedural.
Does DESI's guidance ask for dates as well, too?
Yeah, they're very specific.
Okay.
You know, the things that you have to include.
Yeah. It's not just that we will do these things, but you have to have the timeframes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I guess that's my, that, we don't make a decision and then we're beholden to that forever either, right? So if, if somebody else, you know, tests that theory and gets accepted, great, let's, let's make the modifications.
I think this is a similar, it's a similar scenario as to the competency determinations, right? That there's a lot more detail in there than we would ever normally put in a policy, but it's because DESI's requiring that level of detail. It's the same with this. And so, you know, I think we're all in agreement that typically we don't want a policy. That's this detail, the higher level overview is better.
So, Jim, I think as we, as we review these and we do it, maybe one of the things we can do is, in your spreadsheet that you're tracking, put something like, hey, revisit, like, these things, so, so they don't linger, you know? It's like, kind of put a pin in it. It's like, we don't necessarily want to argue with them right now because we just don't have the cycles to argue, but let's, let's revisit it.
Yeah, fair enough. And again, this is another one. If you, if you read through their guidance, I have to sign off every single year.
Right.
On this policy.
So it seems like, I mean, I think, team D landing is like, none of us like it, and I don't want to speak for Marcy in particular on this one, but, but it seems like the path of least resistance in the moment will be to proceed with the policy similar to what's been presented.
It's the perfect way to present, yeah.
And then I, I agree with Paul's idea, which is, so there's a November first deadline, let's meet the deadline, let's play nice in the sandbox, and then let's think about it in the critical way that we're talking about it, and see if we want to modify the approach for next school year. So that probably means looking at this towards the end of the school year, where we can have that conversation and think about what we want to submit for the next.
And I think, I really believe this will be a conversation of, topic of conversation down at the MASC, MASs conference, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it'll be interesting to see what other folks are doing. But, but that's actually a November one deadline, and many people will put in a waiver to extend it beyond that deadline, but I feel like we have the, the CD and the graduation, and we have our district review, and the CPR is all due by January 15th. I, I just want to.
Path of least resistance, I like that. That's a perfect way to put it.
If it was only gonna be my hassle, I'd probably, you know.
Yeah, I know.
But you're the one, you're the one gonna, you know, take the, you know, it's your hassle more than, more than mine, so.
So when we do this, obviously, again, first read on this policy, and we've had a good first conversation on it, people, if you haven't had a chance to read the specifics and you have questions about it, let's do that between now and our next meeting. I'm gonna assume that all three of these will be on our next meeting's agenda for adoption. But if you have any other questions after you digest it and think about this conversation, reach out to Jim.
Yep.
And then we can flush it out. If there are any proposed changes, say, identify them soon rather late or something, we can refer back to the policy subcommittee. All right, why don't we move on to the consent agenda, which is just gifts and donations. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any discussion? No discussion on consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Now, passing unanimously. Reports of the school committee members. Let's, let's just do reports. Start with Abhishek. What do you got for us?
So it's been an eventful two weeks. I'm grateful to have Zohar, Ojil, and Sophie here at this meeting. We were missing Yash today, but they really touched on most of the things we were looking forward to, the things that happened, and it was great to have them. But that's it for me.
Chris, you want to chime in? Thank you for putting your microphone on. Marcy?
Just would echo, the students were awesome at Ashland Day. Could not believe how many clubs were, had booths. And then the back to school night, I just have to highlight, like, I went to one room, and the teacher gave handouts and then said, would anyone like one in Russian, Portuguese, or Spanish? So impressed, like, because that just didn't happen in other rooms where I got handouts, so, anyway. But all, overall, very impressive back to school nights.
You want?
You know, I will add to the kudos for all of the students who were at Ashland Day. I was volunteering over near the bounce houses, so I happened to see a lot of the young families, and there was a lot of young kids that were really excited to have connected with the older kids who were there, which was really fun to see. Like, it was just a really fun community connection. So kudos to all of the students who were at Ashland Day and really made it what it was, and to the, you know, staff and everybody else who was involved. It was a really great day. I also had the opportunity to go to the ASH PAC meeting last week.